Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Village of Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission for Wednesday, January 10th at 2018. It is 7:00 on the button. Could I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Carmichael?
Here.
Commissioner Sharp?
Here.
Commissioner Van Buren is here. Commissioner Thomas?
Here.
Commissioner Bartel?
Here.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Here.
And Chairman Pell?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Having a quorum, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before you sit down, those of you who are going to offer testimony tonight either for or against any subject, I need to swear you in. So a simple "I" do, if you just acknowledge my statement, raise your right hands. Do you swear that your testimony tonight will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth? So help your head.
Aye.
Thank you very much. And as you're sitting down, please make sure you turn off all cell phones, pagers, silence them, please. Thank you. First order of business, actually even before we get to the minutes, is there anybody who is here for planning and zoning item 18-002, which is I task a bank and trust? That item is going to be continued into next month, so it doesn't look like we have anybody here, so I didn't want anybody to have to sit around and wait for something that's going to be about 31 days into the future. Our first order of business is the approval of the minutes of the December 13th, 2017 regular meeting. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Luke?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Bartel. Any comment or discussion on the minutes? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Carmichael?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
And Chairman Pell?
Yes. Minutes are approved of the December 13th meeting. Is there anyone who is here in our audience tonight to speak on any subject that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will continue into a review of the public hearing procedures. Just so you understand how we work tonight, we will go ahead and I will introduce each item in order on the agenda. As I'm doing that, feel free to approach the speakers area if it's your item so that you can be ready to go up there. We invite the presenting team or the individuals to present the agenda item, explaining their item and addressing any findings of fact or hardships as they're relevant. There's an overhead projector if you need it, because we do have a TV audience at home, anything on the overhead projector will transmit on the TV as well as on the screens which are located around the room. I'll then go to staff, they'll offer their comments. We'll then open the public hearing and anyone from the public will be allowed to speak as long as they've been sworn in either for or against, offer comments. After the public hearing is done, each of the commissioners will go around and we'll ask questions and discuss comments and questions, and then we'll have a discussion among the commissioners. At the conclusion of the discussion, if there's a variance or special use, and both of our items tonight do require that, we'll have a readings of the findings of fact by Joe, and then we'll take a vote after that. At the end of the vote, I'll instruct the applicant as to what the next steps will be. So that's our order tonight, and we'll begin with our open hearings and start out with new business. First up is planning and zoning item 18-001, the first one of the new year. Artisan Development, Horner Park Limited regarding the property located at 409 North Grand Street in Westmont for the following. A, a zoning code variance request to allow for construction of a new home within the required front yard setback to mitigate an existing heritage tree in the R3 single-family detached residence district. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Tom McGuire. My company is Artisan Development, and I am requesting a variance for 409 North Grant to move a house forward 10 feet so I can build a new house. So basically, why I want to move it forward, because there's a heritage crabapple tree right in the footprint of the house. So if it, right now where I want to build a house, like six feet away from the tree. So if I could move it 10 feet forward, we can guess like within 17 feet of the root system of the tree. So basically, I'm here tonight to request a variance to move it.
Very good. All right. Staff?
I'll speak briefly, and then we've got our village forester, John Yader, here to also speak. So what's before you is a variance request to move the house to the 25-foot setback mark. Right now, what's required in the zoning district is 35. If you remember, it was probably about a year and a half ago, we came up with an administrative way when it suited the neighborhood to move a house to 25 feet. And that caveat was that it can't be garage forward, it has to be house forward, and you have to have neighboring houses basically at a similar setback, so you're matching the neighborhood. This heritage tree ordinance, which was recently adopted, didn't take into account how to kind of work through the variance process when village staff does make the request to move a house, and in this case, to save a large tree that could be the largest in the state. And I'll let John elaborate on that. So what we did on the zoning side is we did look at the neighboring houses. Unfortunately, neither house on either side is at 25 feet, but houses across the street are as close, I think, as 19 feet. And if you go two or three houses in either direction to the north or south of this house, there are houses that are much closer to the street. So it does meet the character of the neighborhood to move this house to 25 feet. So although we can't administratively approve that, it does suit the character of the neighborhood, which is the primary zoning influence that we want to see there.
Great. Thank you. John?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here. For your consideration, we're asking that this variance be approved on the basis that the tree that we're trying to move this away from potentially is, and I know Joe mentioned the biggest in the state, but potentially the biggest in the country. We require a tree survey when we do all develop, new development projects, all development projects, actually. And we didn't know this tree was there until it was identified on the survey. Did a field inspection with Tom himself and came across this tree, and it was like, wow, it was, it's, I've never seen a crabapple tree that big. And that being said, potentially, this could have really significant, high significance to the community itself. If it is determined to be the largest tree in the country, it then becomes a national champion. The holdup right now is that it's a crabapple, we know that, we don't know the specific species, the subspecies of that particular crabapple. So the state and the national level only identify crabapple species that are considered native to the state. There's six species. It's potentially one of those six, but it's not guaranteed. So if it's not one of those native species, technically, it's not a national champion, but it's still the biggest crabapple tree potentially in the country, even if it isn't a native species. Crabapple, apple in general has a big history of the settlement of this country. It has huge significance potentially with the history of this community. And seven feet, as the original plans were proposed, is entirely too close. 17 feet will give us a little bit more working room to actually do that. And as Joe mentioned, I think it works with the character of the neighborhood. So I would appreciate your consideration in this matter.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anybody have any questions?
We may in a few seconds. John, any comments before I open the hearing?
Just a compliment to the applicant for working with the village and the village's forester to attempt to accommodate this tree.
Okay. We will open the public hearing on this. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak? Please sign in up there if you haven't already.
I have.
Great. I love an efficient deal.
I'm Jim Hebdis. I live at 413 North Grant.
Okay.
And I've known that tree. I've lived there my entire life.
Oh.
I used to climb that tree and eat the apples out of it when I was a child. But a crabapple tree normally lives 35 to 75 years. And that tree is beyond that, and that tree has never been maintained. So the tree is not likely to survive anyway. So my house sits 60 feet back from the street. So I think maybe his house being 25 feet would be too close to the street for me and my next-door neighbor also. And that's all I have.
Okay.
Wait, one more thing.
Sure.
Back in 2006, you allowed Steve Vernon to knock down 60 trees at least on the property behind me at 408 North Cass, including one 30-inch diameter black walnut tree, and you had no problem with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to respond to that, that's one of the reasons that the village recently enacted a heritage tree ordinance, so we can identify and preserve those types of trees that got knocked down.
Oh, yeah. Well, everybody complained about it then. And you, go ahead.
Well, now we've got some protections in place.
Yeah. You're late for another short break time?
Yep.
Anyone else from the public who'd like to comment on this? Alrighty. Hearing none. We will go to the commissioners, and I will start with Commissioner Van Buren.
The, is this, will you be able to identify this tree once it leaves, the leaves come on, or is what's, what's holding up the ability to truly identify it?
So there's over 1,000 different subspecies of crabapple in the country, and particularly in this area. Even the experts have a hard time identifying a lot of the different variety of them. And particularly, the spring is the best time when they come out and flower, and they put on their new leaves is the best time to actually go through and identify particularly what these are.
Okay. Now, is the bottom of the tree such that the root system will be cut with the foundation even at this distance?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. And it's true that this tree has not been maintained. Is it your assessment also that this tree is doomed regardless of what you do?
No. No, it's true, this tree has not been maintained. I don't know, I couldn't even say when the last time it may have been pruned is. There is some significant deadwood in it. It does have some portions that are hollow. I believe the tree to be viable. I believe that if we take certain protection measures to it, you asked about the root system, particularly root pruning, protective fencing, there's tree growth regulators, a lot of different construction damage prevention practices that we can use to prolong, not really prolong the life of the tree, but get it through the development process itself. As Jim mentioned, these trees don't live that long. This tree is particularly special in that reason that it's lived as long as it has, and it's gotten as big as it has. So for whatever reason, this tree is very apt to that site. We're going to be changing that site a little bit with the development, but with these practices, I think we can save the tree if we save the tree for 10 to 20 more years. There's a value in that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Thomas?
If, if comes spring and we, you determine species, subspecies, and that, and it turns out to not be what we think it is, would the owner have time to move it back, or would you have any interest in moving it back, or just leave it the way it is, regardless of whether the tree was there or not?
I would assume that Mr. McGuire would have already gone through most of the process, especially have the foundation in at that time. You're typically looking at anywhere from end of April to mid-May for leaf out and flower these plants, depending on the climate for that year, how warm it gets, how soon. So I would assume at that point, he's already going to have the development in progress.
Was the question, could I move the tree, or was...
No, no, no. If, I didn't know how quickly you were going to start construction, and if, and if it, if we found out the information about the tree?
Right.
And you hadn't started yet, then what would be, you know, it's still up to you because it's your property and you're, and you've already gotten the okay, maybe, who knows?
I did say to John from the day I met him, like, I'd like to work with the village if it is, I mean, if at all possible. But, and I explained to him my point of view that I bought this lot, and I obviously want to build something on it because expense every month carries these costs, you know. So to answer your question, like, within a reasonable amount of time, like spring, I don't know, when we're talking, like, it could be March, April before, and that's going to put me back a lot, you know.
Okay, you're going to come here, get your decision one way or the other, and then depending on what the decision is, you go and do your reaction and start building. Okay, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thanks. Commissioner Sharp?
Yeah, just clarification from the forester. So you're thinking that I probably this will, this could survive the improvements on the site, and that if it's maintained, you think 10 to 20 years more lifespan is reasonable expectation?
As it's gotten as far as it has now, obviously, that would not be unreasonable. I wouldn't be standing here in front of all you right now if I thought, well, it was a waste of your time, my time, or if the tree was not going to survive this process. So...
Okay. And even if it's not one of the six native species, you're saying it can still rank as one of the largest crabapple trees in the country?
The entire country, yeah, the United States.
Yeah. Okay.
It's the largest crabapple I can find on record. Now, the records only show native species, but it's the largest that I can find on record that's not in either Europe or anywhere else overseas.
Wow. I think it'd be a really cool item to have on your property for the future homeowner.
I've been telling Tom that the whole time. It's a niche market, right? I mean, there's very few of us that would appreciate something like that to have in your own yard, I mean.
It's true. It's a deep lap. No more questions?
Look at the tree. It's the prettiest tree here, so...
Well, it is a crabapple tree.
Like John said, it is a niche market. Depends who's I love, you know. It's a niche market for, if you...
Oh, I would love it, yeah.
You'd love that tree back here. But probably 90% of people like to park in this house that probably want a good tree, so...
But it's the biggest. People like the biggest of anything.
I know.
Right?
Commissioner Bartel?
How old is the tree? Do you have an idea how old it is?
Yeah, Mr. Hebdis and I were talking about this earlier, and I don't have any records of actually how old the tree is. The tree has some decay in it, so I don't think there's going to be any way to tell exactly. You can estimate by rings, potentially when the tree is at that point where it needs to be removed, but right now, there really isn't a way to tell. I have aerial photographs from, I think the oldest is 1930, early 1930s. You could identify the tree on that, so...
Wow. Will the roots create problems with the building, like the sewer system or anything like that, do you anticipate, as they continue to expand, assuming they're viable?
Tom, could I just have you come up? It doesn't pick up on the TV audience, then. You've got a lot of fans out there, I'm sure.
It's, I don't know whether it's going to affect, because if you're 17 feet away from the tree itself, like the trunk of the tree, it shouldn't probably affect the foundation, but like any closer will, you know. And obviously, it's going to create a problem down the road if your, if your root system run up right again near your foundation. So I think it would be safe enough at 17 feet, which it would be if we moved it 10 feet forward.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I measured it several times.
Okay.
Commissioner Lavoy?
John, I've got a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Depth of root structure for the tree itself, and normally, aside from the subspecies, how deep is the root structure of the tree?
90% of your roots on any tree are within the top foot.
Top foot.
Yeah, but you're going to have, roots are advantageous. All your structural roots are going to go down about three feet, give or take, depending on the soil conditions. I would say in this particular, I grew up down the street from here, the soils there are very good, so it's probably potentially your structural roots a little bit deeper than three feet, but that's within 10 to 15 feet of the tree itself, probably less than that, actually. Then 90% of your feeder roots are going to be within the top foot of the soil. Again, roots are advantageous, so if there's locations where they're high in nutrients, high in water, or just even space, oxygen sometimes, they will go to those, those spaces. And roots have been known to grow down 10 or, 10 or more feet.
Okay.
But the majority of your roots are going to be in the top foot of the soil, where all that oxygen, all those nutrients, they get the rain, all that stuff are.
But typically, these trees, or any tree, really, I mean, it's a matter of changing the character or the drainage around it, changing the character of what's on the surface. I just happened to notice on the plan that it looks like there's a deck or patio?
Patio.
Being considered, and with the root structure being within a foot, that's going to take out that whole foot. Is that going to be a deck, or is that going to be a patio?
Well, that's actually what I was going to point out, because it will be a patio, I mean, and probably be, so, again, it won't be like, if I'm moving the house like 10 feet forward, it'd still be a fair distance away from the tree, so I don't think it's going to hurt the root system. And probably, like some cobblestone or something, I won't be digging down too much, or going to hit probably the root, how deep's the root system, like 12, 12 inches?
Yeah, like I said before, 90% of your roots are in the top foot. So any, any construction project, you're going to have impacts on a tree, on their root system itself.
Right.
Typically, your standards for the amount of damage a root system in itself will take is very similar to what they, what they recommend for the pruning of the tree itself. So no more than 30%. So realistically, we can remove 30% of that root system and expect the tree to respond perfectly fine to that.
Okay, I just didn't know by looking at it, if it's, if it's a deck, that means that the only real support structure is the post in the ground that leaves everything else. But if it's a patio, you're excavating that whole foot for that whole, whole surface area.
Mm-hmm. But if you notice, like, the original plan, the house was flipped, and I had like a garage door going out in the back of the lot, and obviously, it would hit that tree. So that's why I flipped it around, so it'd have less impact, you know.
All right. Where's the sump pump discharge in relation to the tree?
It's basically right in the, it's, if you look at the plan, it's right in the center of the house, more or less right in the center of the house, in the basement. If you see them support columns.
So the discharge is not towards the tree?
No.
Okay.
What you were mentioning about the root system, if you look at the plan, if you take where the patio is and where the foundation is, basically take that out, you're taking out, I would say about 20 to 30% of the root system. It's still going to have the entirety of everything on the side and everything behind it to the rear. So I think, again, it's not ideal, but it's better than the foundation. If you're digging a foundation, you're going down, you're going to remove all those roots. Pulling the back 17 feet is going to be a considerable difference, even if you're putting a patio closer. Again, you can take certain measures to not damage those roots as much, especially if you're doing something like cobblestone where you don't have to actually get like a real deep footing to maintain there, to set that patio.
Okay. Does it make sense for the village to, you know, if, let's say that the tree doesn't survive, let's give it a five, seven-year timeline, does it make sense to, you know, to preserve it in some way, take a slice of it and preserve that slice in the trees? That this is what we had in Westmont?
I don't believe I've ever heard anybody ask that.
I mean, hey, it's a historic tree.
I guess that's, to me, that's not preservation, that's removing it.
No, no, I'm saying after the decision's made, it's got to come down. And by the way, who makes that decision in the future? We go forward, build a house, who decides then at that point if the tree comes down or doesn't? Let's say that the homeowner comes in, you build the house, I don't like the tree, it's coming down.
Technically, per our heritage tree ordinance that was just adopted, that tree is protected.
So we are totally protected by that?
Yes.
Okay.
So if there is a decision, so say the tree is, say the tree is getting to the point where it's, it's come to the end of its life, or it doesn't survive the construction process, or maybe it survives for five years and gets to the point where removal is required, village forester would make that decision.
Okay. I don't have anything else, other than to compliment you on your socks.
Oh, thank you.
Commissioner Carmichael?
John, is this a, if this tree is not one of the six subspecies, is it a heritage tree?
It is. So the village identifies a heritage tree per our definitions. Certain species are classified as a heritage tree, but then it's anything over four, sorry, 35 inches that is not considered a weed species.
So what we're talking then is the difference, not as a heritage tree, but the possibility of it's being a national champion tree?
It is a considerable difference, but if you look at it, this tree, even if it's not a national champion, again, it has a certain amount of history for the community, but it also has a huge importance for the scientific community. Again, crabapples don't live this long typically. They don't get this big, and for some reason, this one is. And if it's something genetically that this tree is doing that others are not, they can actually replicate this tree, grafting and different things. So it's, it's got, it has a lot more importance than just the potential of being a national champion.
What, what rights does a homeowner have? Someone who purchases this, this home, say that's private property. If you or someone from the University of Illinois wants to study the tree, that homeowner says, I don't want you on my property. Is this a possibility too? I'm just trying to...
As far as it being a conflict?
Yes.
I believe so. We're actually working with John right now to try to amend out those kinks in the ordinance. So yes, it is.
Okay. Well, I have no more questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. My questions have all been answered here by our illustrious panel here, so I have no further questions. I appreciate the presentations and the comments from the neighbor. Are there any other comments that the commissioners would like? Yes, Chris?
Yeah, one more. John, would that be appropriate for something similar to a deed restriction? So as property owners, I'm sure that the property owner that is going to buy from the applicant, he's, they are going to know, but maybe coming down the road, they're not going to know unless somewhere it's defined. Does it make sense to have a restriction that would be identified that an attorney would pick up at the closing, oh, by the way?
So we actually discussed that on a staff level last Thursday when this issue first came up, at least across my desk, as something that would be great. Obviously, a homeowner or developer would not want to unreasonably put a conservation easement or something on the property that takes up more area than is necessary, but it's not something that we can legally require. So we'd have to work with the current property owner and see if we can work something out. And if not, then, you know, private property rights are going to trump our desire.
Of course. Well, I have to ask the question then, would you be interested in doing that? Is that what's going on in the discussion with staff?
You mean for an easement around the tree?
I was thinking of some sort of mechanism that would not necessarily restrict you or anybody else. or anybody else, a future owner, but what it would do if you did that, it would be an identifier that for any future ownership, it's a trigger for them to at least know about it, that it's there, not going to impact the house, it's not going to impact anything, but if there's some language that is on the deed, that historic tree is there, and that conservation easement doesn't have to be big, if that's the mechanism that John is recommending, but if that were there, it would just be when the law transfers ownership, it would be something that's going to get picked up and it's not going to get destroyed, you know, accidentally.
Well, that's what I, as I explained earlier, like, I'm willing to work with the village, but for a future homeowner that's going to buy the house off me.
Yeah.
They might say, well, I don't give a, I don't care about crab apple tree, I want to move that away, I mean.
Yeah.
So like, if we do put this easement on it, they'd obviously have to, like, some rights to move the tree and their own property, so, like, I didn't talk to John yet about it, but again, we have to sit down and talk about this, see.
It's a legal matter, it's just one of these things that, I know things happen all the time inadvertently and not intentionally, it's just, for me personally, I'm not speaking for the board here, but I wouldn't want to put any undue restriction on you at all, I think it's your right to do, and I'm in favor of this request, it's just that sometimes people don't know any better, and if they did know better, and what is the mechanism for to get to know better and be aware? Because it could happen, and that would be a shame if it did.
Go ahead.
Pardon me, Tom. I think what you're saying is just as an identifier of, you know, the tree on the, so an identifier on the deed or what have you for future homeowners, and we have discussed at a staff level, again, with John, and we don't have an answer for that just yet, but we're working on a method to actually do that. It doesn't have, it's not going to be a conservation easement where we have an easement, the ability to actually go on the property and, you know, whoever could or whatever, but it'll be at a minimum an identifier for future homeowners.
For example, the.
Something that.
The deed could say that the property contains a crab apple tree, this location, which is subject to the village's heritage tree ordinance and cannot be removed without a permit.
That's perfect, yeah, well, I think that would be adequate. It's just something that, just to take care of, oh, future homeowners that might buy the, you might sell it to a person or a family that could be there for another thirty years, and it wouldn't matter to them, but if they flip it and they move out of town in three years, no one's going to know.
Again, but as I said, that's probably a legal matter, like, that's goes with my attorney and see what's the best, like, for me and obviously, like, as I say, I work with the village, but.
Yeah.
Who knows, like, for me, like, marketing this house, if I have to market the house as.
It's a positive.
Well, not really, because if, like, who wants a crab apple, I wouldn't want a crab apple tree in my backyard.
Yeah, but it's historic.
I know, but.
I guess it wouldn't bother me if I was buying your house, it would, it would be a wow for me.
But.
Might be ugly tree, but it's a wow for me, it's a conversation piece, it's, it means something to a lot of other people, and, you know, that should be respected, but, you know, I applaud your efforts so far, John, you too, you know, to dig in as much as you have to do what's right here, and I think you're doing it right, and I appreciate it very much. I'm very much in favor of the variation.
Thank you.
Any other comments from commissioners or discussion? Staff, any further comments? John?
Just one other comment, I know the term, I guess just a species has been thrown around, you know, crab apple as it's nothing significant, but crab apple's actually the number one ornamental tree planted in the Midwest. So for your consideration, they still plant a number of crab apples, because they are beautiful in the spring, and that's about it, but I mean, it is the number one ornamental tree in the Midwest as far as still being planted this day.
Thank you for that. Anyone else from the public want to speak before I close the public hearing? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. As we have a variance request in front of us, I would ask that Joe would be kind enough to please read the findings of fact.
This is PZ eighteen dash zero zero one, Artisan Development, Horner Park Limited, regarding four oh nine North Grant Street in Westmont. Request for variance to allow the construction of a new home within the required front yard setback. Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return, it permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it is located. Findings of fact, the property contains a significant heritage tree that the applicant wishes to preserve at the urging of the village. Moving the house ten feet towards the front yard and redesigning aspects of the house's footprint will likely save this important tree. This variance request is not an attempt by the applicant to make more money from the property, but instead will allow the applicant to save this tree and yield a reasonable return. Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. Findings of fact, the sole reason for this variance request is to save a significant heritage tree on the property, and this request was urged by the village. Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. Findings of fact, the variance, if granted, will result in a front yard setback of twenty-five feet instead of thirty-five feet as required by the zoning ordinance. Other houses in the immediate area contain front yard setbacks between nineteen to twenty-two feet. Relocating the proposed house ten feet towards the front yard will not impede sunlight to the neighboring properties, will not create line of sight issues, will not create access issues, and otherwise will not alter the character of the neighborhood.
If you agree with these findings of fact, please raise your hand. If you disagree with these findings of fact, please raise your hand. We are in favor six to one. I will entertain a motion for planning and zoning item eighteen dash zero zero one, Artisan Development, Horner Park Limited, regarding the property located at four oh nine North Grant Street in Westmont, for A, a zoning code variance request to allow for construction of a new home within the required front yard setback to mitigate an existing heritage tree in the R three, single-family detached residence district.
Still move?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Van Buren, second by Commissioner Sharp. Comment or discussion on the motion? Yes, sir.
Ask Commissioner Carmichael what his objection was to the findings of fact.
I, on the, the variance will result in a front yard setback at twenty-five instead of thirty-five, and others, I think from the testimony of the neighbor at fourteen, four thirteen North Grant, that it's having a major impact on his property, and that it will have, I don't know, possible line of sight, for sure, I don't know about sunlight, and I disagree with that statement.
Okay, appreciate it.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmichael?
No.
And Chairman Pell?
Yes. The motion passes, six to one. You have our recommendation, and the next step will be to go before the village board, that will occur on a Thursday night in the near future, and Joe will coordinate you as to when that's going to be. It'll be on a Thursday night, you're welcome to come, sir, to that also, and that will be published both online and there'll be notices posted here at the village hall. Thank you all. Moving forward, planning and zoning item one eight dash zero zero two, I task a bank and trust, one one two six seven, Donald D. Phyllis J. McLean, regarding the property located at one thirty-eight North Cass Avenue in Westmont. A, special use permit to request to operate a barber shop on the ground floor in the B one limited business district. I am going to go ahead and open up the public hearing on this, and I'm going to entertain a motion. Gentlemen, could you step outside, please? I'm going to entertain a motion to continue this to our next meeting, which is going to take place on February fourteenth.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bartel, second by Commissioner Sharp. Comments or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmichael?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
And Chairman Pell?
Yes. Planning and zoning item one eight dash zero zero three, Jewel Osco, regarding the property located at four East Ogden Avenue in Westmont, for the following. A, a zoning code variance request to increase the maximum number of signs permitted in the B two general business district, and B, a zoning code variance request to increase the maximum allowable signage area in the B two general business district. Good evening.
Good evening. You know, I filled out the form out there.
That's perfect.
One, two?
You're good to go.
Oh, excellent. In that case, my name is John Streets, I'm with Doyle Signs, and I'm here on behalf of Jewel Osco. At the core of this request, we are seeking exterior signage that will advertise a new service provided by Jewel Osco that is above and beyond existing services already provided by this location. I believe it's within the intent of your sign code to allow for such signage, as it has been approved for this and other locations in the past. Specifically, the hardship of this property is in what code allows. Code doesn't specifically call out signage requirements for larger businesses like Jewel with expansive elevations and with many different aspects of their business to identify on the outside of the building. Specifically, Jewel Osco has three hundred and twenty-seven feet of frontage on Ogden, the north elevation, and two hundred and fifty-eight feet of frontage on the Cass west elevation. Both elevations are architecturally complete and should be figured for the entire elevation when calculating sign area allowances. There should be a letter from the architect in your package that comments on the.
That's been received.
Okay.
We all have copies, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. The site has been operating with a total of one thousand one hundred and fifty-six point seven square feet, including ten wall signs and two freestanding signs by the road. Sign we are proposing reads, "Drive Up and Go, Online Order Pickup," and is supposed to illuminate at night and install on the west elevation. Sign is sixty-eight point four square feet and would install on a natural sign banned area and works well within the architecture of that space. It has been proven in the past that the number of signs on this site is warranted by the number of uses and services provided within the store. This request is no different, and as mentioned earlier, it is an addition, it is an additional service being offered at this location. This trend of online ordering is on the rise, and Jewel Osco needs this sign to identify it to the customers, compete in the market, and to highlight that this store is one of the few stores that currently offer this service. This service is not currently offered at every Jewel Osco location, and I believe that this additional one sign on the property is necessary and is a reasonable request. Very few properties within the village have the amount of street frontage that Jewel Osco has, which makes it a unique property, it wouldn't set a precedent for other businesses. This request is a means to identify a brand new service, and brand, of the company in the online ordering service. It's a means to communicate this service and stay current in the market, where this is becoming more popular, being offered by major competitors like Walmart, Mariano's. Staff has been very helpful in working with us on this location, and made many suggestions to us. We did review these suggestions with Jewel Osco, and fortunately, they, we couldn't make those work, which is why we're here before you today. Unfortunately, none of the other signs could be sacrificed to make room for this sign. If this variance is approved, I believe it will benefit, it'll provide a benefit to the community and not impair anything to the public. It is within the intent and purpose of the code to provide such identification for businesses, and the hardship and uniqueness of this property proves it is reasonable and appropriate. If you consider the full length of both street elevations, the addition of this "Drive Up and Go" signage will not, will only exceed what code currently allows by fifty-five point four square feet, or just less than five percent of the total for both elevations. And with that said, I'd like to answer any questions or address any comments from everyone on this board.
Great. We'll get to those in just a second. First, I'd like to hear from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
As we just finished a one-year-long round of talking about signage, I'm sure you want to hear me talk about signage a little bit more.
You are our authority, though.
I will try to not overwhelm, but basically, when staff started working with Doyle, and we work with Doyle on a lot of properties, they're very good to work with, we always try to see how we can work within the code first. So in your staff reports, I felt it was only fair, since this building has been there for so long, and we just changed our sign code, that we should look at it both from old sign code standards, which they were abiding by, to new sign code standards. So what we wanted to point out, first off, and you heard the applicant talk about frontages, so one of the issues is that in our old sign code standards, we would only allow the longest frontage, which is your Ogden Avenue frontage, to calculate signage, and then we'd used a one point five square feet per length of that. So using that calculation, it said that this site would have been permitted four hundred and ninety-one square feet of signage. Now, that signage has to be divided up with what's on the walls, what's on the ground signs or the monument sites. They did, Jewel Osco did enter into a planned development agreement with the village in, I think, two thousand and four, when they did their last facade renovation. Over time, more and more signage was placed on the building, so basically what that PD agreement was, it solidified all the signage that was there, and the number of eleven hundred and fifty-six is what was there. So in reality, it was two times, or a little bit better than two times, of what was permitted to be on the site. Now, if you remember in the year-long process, one of the things that I had said is that staff was looking to relax the standards, to take into account corner lots, because we were, we were over restrictive in corner lots, in my opinion. And so measuring by current standards, staff is using nine hundred and twelve feet, and how do we, how do we get larger? It's because we are including the second elevation. Now, you heard the applicant say that he's provided an architect's letter that says they feel the whole elevation towards Cass Avenue is architecturally significant. Staff disagrees, and the way we wrote the code, it said that it was, it had an entrance, it had windows, it had fenestration, and basically details, that staff looked at this elevation and said, well, one half of this is somewhat detailed, and the other half is just face brick that was done for more of the service type area in the back. So staff used, used half of the facade. So even using half the facade, it came up with that nine hundred and sixteen square feet is what they would be permitted by today's standards, which is a substantial amount of signage. The issue of additional businesses inside working, staff feels that is very valid, and I think that's why, you know, that you do see the Starbucks on the outside and the other businesses that are advertising to the outside. There's no way to write the code, at least, I'm not going to rewrite it at this point. There's no way to really rewrite the code and say, well, if you're a user of a certain size, you're permitted additional business signs. We could look into that, but really, we were looking to eliminate a lot of the variances, but we were never going to eliminate all the variances. So in this case, they are adding an additional service. It's not an additional business that's inside, and although we can't regulate what the sign says, approval of this variance would be increasing the signage, allowing another sign on the building, and that would run in perpetuity with the land. So the signage would run continuous. So that is staff's concern, is that we have offered options to Jewel Osco and to Doyle that basically said, well, you could work within the amount of signage you have, and it's a three hundred square foot sign that's on that elevation now, why can't you reconfigure it, add all the language you want within the three hundred square feet? We gave the option of, well, you could remove a sign off the front of the building and put one equal in size on the side of the building. We emphasized that it seems like you'd want to advertise this to both Cass and Ogden, so why don't you modify your existing pylon or freestanding signs to add that service? But the route that they chose to go was to still add the additional sign. The last thing I just want to point out is that we, I think, five of these Jewel Oscos are doing this service, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so staff did, three are in Chicago, and I wasn't going to call Chicago to try to find out what other communities were doing. I know that one community did, it did permit a sign, but it was at a much smaller square footage, and that building was much farther away from the street, and so why is that important? Farther away from the street means it's already going to read as smaller, so it was, I think it was like forty-four square feet is what they approved on that building, farther away from the street actually reads as smaller. I did, I did ask Doyle to ask Jewel if they wanted to consider a smaller sign, they stuck with the sixty-eight square foot sign. And then another community I know at the time had said that they denied the signage, but they didn't know if a variance request would be coming. So I think other communities are struggling with the same question, and their sign code also can't deal with this without a variance. And as always, I'm available for any questions. There are a lot of numbers in this, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to elaborate.
Thank you, as always, Joe, appreciate it. John, any comments you'd like to add?
Nothing, except that Joe also pointed out on the staff report that many businesses have a delivery service or online ordering component to their business, and. and question whether this would potentially set a precedent. Or if every future new service that Jewel might provide over the next 5, 10, 15, 20 years, does that mean a new sign? It's a valid question.
John, can I just add to that? What staff has found that over time, signage used to be for identification. Where is the business? How do I get to the business? Over time, signage has really ebbed into the classification of advertising. And when you move into advertising, every business would benefit from more advertising.
Good point. Okay. I will open up the public hearing. We have a line. So, we have no one here at this particular point, so I will then move to the commissioners, and I will begin with Commissioner Thomas.
I need two pictures. We have one with the sign and one without. Now, staff has said that to Jewel, take the "Drive Up and Go" sign that you want to put on Cass Avenue and make it smaller. Was that one of the options?
Well, we had given them three options. To work within the code, and because no one wants to approach the variance process, we always try to work within what can be done because it's much easier just to process a permit than it is to go through this process. So, one option was modify the sign that's on that elevation, which is about 300 square feet, and figure out how to say Jewel Osco and whatever else you want to say. The other option we had said is, "Well, you have 10 signs on the front of the building. Is there something that you can take off the front? Whatever that square footage is will let you move it because you're not increasing the number of signs and you're not increasing the square footage." You could basically take one and swap it out. And then the third was you could change your existing pole signs to add the service.
And they said no to everything except what you're asking for here, right?
That is correct.
Is there Jewel on Cass and 75th? Is there a... Is there a Jewel there? Okay. Did I drive by the other day? Did I see a "Drive Up and Go" on that Jewel?
Do you know what town that is? I don't think so, but let me just...
It caught my eye, so apparently it was big enough. And I was wondering if what the dimensions of that sign was.
That's where they want to put it.
So, to my knowledge, there isn't one there. Oak Forest, two in Chicago, Gray's Lake, and this make up the five.
I don't... I could be mistaken.
Yeah, I don't think there is.
I don't think so either.
It's... Every Jewel Osco, I mean, there's one at Main and I think 63rd that I drive by as well. Everyone's a little bit different because they don't all have the same interior services. And then obviously, you know, Downers Grove is much more restrictive on their monument signs. It's a much smaller signage on that store than what you see over in Darien. So, every community is a bit different. And so, my staff research when this first started was I first went to the Jewel Osco website and said, "How many buildings are they doing this out of?" I counted five, at least at that time when I was doing my research. And Darien was not one of the five that I found.
Now, on these signs that are at the entrances, you want the signs on that also, right? In egress and you're coming in and coming out, the pillar signs?
No.
The only one is this one. Oh, that says, like you were saying, drugstore drive-through. Well, I agree about the signs on the out... On the front, on the south, saying what's on, what's available inside. I agree with those. That doesn't look overly populated, you know? And it looks to me like there's room on the west exposure if... But if you could make the Jewel Osco sign smaller and make room for that, it seems to me that staff is bending over backwards here. I have my doubts on supporting this. See what the other commissioners have to say.
Can I comment on that, please? Thank you. In terms of reducing the Jewel Osco sign, that actually creates a very large cost for them to remove that sign, fabricate a brand-new sign that's slightly smaller, and then reinstall it. I believe that was not done just from a sheer cost impact to try to implement signage for this program. Now, I can't say that for sure with 100% confidence that that was the reason behind Jewel Osco's decision there, but that logistically makes sense to me.
Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Give a short shrug.
I just wanted clarity because I was surprised to hear that the signage variance ran with the land. Does that... Is that what you said, Joe?
John can correct me if I'm wrong, but variances always run with the property. So, if... And we try, in terms of signage, we try to look at the square footage and the number. So, if they get a variance to add one more sign, it means they're always allowed to have one more sign. If they get a variance for 100 extra square feet, then they can always have 100 extra square feet, even if another business takes over.
That makes sense in most cases, but with some stuff that, depending on architectural arrangement, and the architecture goes away, you still get the variance. They're now irrelevant. I mean, my question is, we keep adding and adding and adding signage, square footage, and number to this site, and what if it gets redeveloped in the future? They just grandfathered in all of this extra square footage of signage?
No, that would change them, because then the signs would be eliminated and you'd start anew if the building were removed and a new building were put up.
Oh, so it's not like, okay, well, you had, you know, 1,000 square feet of signage before, so now no matter what you do, you get 1,000. It's not that way.
Correct. It's with... In the case of signage, it's with this particular building.
So, if the Jewel decided, if for some reason they were sold and a furniture store went in and decided to just... They like the open look, the caverns inside and stuff. They don't need any interior walls. They're not going to knock it down. They could use that number of signs and the square footage that carries. It's not till the wrecking ball comes in.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Well, that helps me understand that better. I agree with the staff's approach on the west side. I think that the northwest half of the elevation is certainly a secondary elevation as compared to the south elevation. I also think that, I mean, given the architecture of the south side, the identification of the services inside, like the liquor, pharmacy, Starbucks, all of those signs seem very appropriate. This elevation seems scaled well. And actually, if you take liquor or pharmacy off, I mean, I think that'd be a detriment because I think the architecture is calling for some signage there. But I do think on the west side, Jewel Osco, that's a fairly large sign. And I'm not... Unfortunately, it seemed straightforward to me that adding additional signage for this project is not due to any unique circumstance because, as Joe pointed out, every business would benefit from additional advertising, which is what this is. And it doesn't seem to be any particular hardship to me that's unique to this property. And there's already been... You guys are already over what is in the code already. So, I would think the onus is on Jewel Osco to try to make something work among the many options that the village has already presented, is my opinion.
Commissioner Bartel?
Well, I would echo the same sentiments. And I guess my question is, why couldn't you do one of the three recommendations that the staff has provided? Why not?
All of the signs on both elevations have a purpose, and they address some service or product that they have within the store. It was not an option for them to remove, say, Starbucks Coffee to put up this particular sign. The same applied to every single one of the signs, the liquor, the pharmacy, the Elmhurst Health sign. Several of those tenants pay rent inside the space, and so they're entitled to assign as if they were a tenant in the shopping center. You know, they've done their best to work within what's been allowed them over the years, and staff has always been very amazing in dealing with all of Jewel Osco's requests. Having this sign on the west elevation will serve the purpose to help them stay current in the market with this online ordering. It'll draw attention to the fact that it's something new that they're providing. It also falls in line with all of the... I believe there's six parking spaces right in front of that area where that sign is where people will park. So, it'll also act as a beacon for where these customers will go to park their vehicle to get the service, to have those things taken to their car.
It just seems to me that the monument sign could be modified to add the text, and it wouldn't have to be an increase. I don't know. I like the third recommendation. I think that's easy to work with. Just my thoughts.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Well, first thing is that I know that staff, in particular Joe, and we all have in the entire village, spent a lot of time with Joe in particular on our sign code and revamping the sign code. And I have a tremendous amount of respect for what was done so far. And I see that the recommendations that... The way I look at it is the recommendations that staff has given the applicant, it's been adequate and been reasonable. I think making a modification to a sign... Everybody knows where Jewel's is, for sure. I mean, the demographics of the market that our store here, Cass and Ogden, everybody knows what that service area is, correct? I mean, it's not that far. It's a well-established neighborhood. And modifications, as staff has suggested, could be done pretty easily to make this happen. And now, I know that on another front, it sets precedence for other businesses. What happens if a car dealership that has maximized their square footage wants to add, you know, an oil chain service? Or they want to add a car wash service or any other business? I could think of hundreds of different examples that we set precedence by what this case presents. I know that we've worked hard on the sign ordinance, but once we set precedence, I'm in fear of, well, you know, since the village did consider this, without any modifications to existing signage to comply, that we're really opening up a can of worms for future applicants to deviate from the code that Joe has worked very hard to get to where it is today. And I will not be in favor.
Commissioner Carmichael?
Well, I guess I'm going to agree with everyone else. I don't feel terribly strongly either way, but I do see the issue of this setting a precedent, that it could impact other properties and where they're going to be coming in saying, "Jewel got it. Why can't we?" And I guess that's what really sways me. I think you should try to work within those recommendations on that west facade.
If I can comment real quick? Just with regard to precedence, setting precedence, I believe this property is unique within the village. Being that it's unique sets it apart from setting precedent for any other business.
And I understand your opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Van Buren?
Well, in your defense, I would say that this is the way marketing is going. And it looks like this is the front end of it for Jewel, where you're just starting to get into this. But almost every big box store now is going to have to revamp their marketing efforts if they want to continue to survive. Having said that, Jewel is an important institution or business in this community. It's important to a lot of us, and we've worked well with you in the past. But you... I think you're going to have to be a little bit more flexible on this to... The staff has come up with reasonable remedies to this situation without a great cost to you. And I think that I would have to agree with my fellow commissioners that I would have to disagree with your request.
Thank you. So, I have a couple of comments and some questions to make. So, the first one, I think you've already answered, and there's going to be five of these. And I assume that's an initial deal of the cards, but five of them, correct?
That's correct. There are currently five.
Right. So, do you know the rollout expansion plans? Like, do they go to 10 necks and 15, or...
I do not. I do know that signage is up at three of the five locations. The location in Gray's Lake that was mentioned by staff, that Planning and Zoning Commission was on Monday, and they approved the request. It still has to go to the village board for final approval. And this would be the last location to address signage.
Do you know the approximate service area that this Jewel is servicing right now with the delivery trucks?
I don't. Traditionally, I believe the way this service is set up is they drive up and go, as in they drive up, they park in one of the designated parking spots, and then I'm guessing via the... I haven't used the service myself, so I apologize. Via maybe a smartphone or some other device, they can say, "Hey, I'm here," and then they run out the food.
Yep. That's how this particular works, and you are correct. The spots are right there because that's where I park all the time. They took my parking spot away. But they are also offering an additional service here, which I believe is also only offered at the five, and that's the delivery service of groceries. And I understand that that geographic area is quite large. Are you familiar with that, with the delivery trucks, both equipped for hot and cold delivery?
I am not.
For the record, there are five businesses inside the Jewel Osco. So, we have TCF Bank, Starbucks, the medical center through Elmhurst, and then we have the dry cleaners and UPS. So, there is a need for those signs, at least to identify those businesses. As I looked at this, I sort of felt that, you know, staff has presented some great ideas, and it just seemed like it just went nowhere. It's like, okay, we're drawing the line in the sand, meaning Jewel is. On the other hand, I'm a pretty pro-business guy, and I understand that the whole concept is new. It's big. This is a cornerstone development in our community. It's one of our largest businesses. It draws people from surrounding communities. There aren't Jewels in Oak Brook. There aren't Jewels right away in Hinsdale or Clarendon Hills on Ogden Avenue. It brings a lot of people into the town. I continually see people from other communities shopping there as I do myself. I then went and looked at the shopping center that's directly to the north of this. And I believe that that frontage is way less than the combined two sides of the Jewel. And yet, to me, it looks abominable as far as the number of signs. Everybody has maxed out a sign across their entire front of these stall businesses, if you will. Here, if you look at the front, to me, this is an orderly and a well-discplied signage. I don't think it's crammed in. It's not excessively large. It's not overpowering at night. And right now, while the "Drive Up and Go" sign is not up in its exact format, there is a banner up there right now where probably everybody saw it who went out there to take a look at it, and you can see where it's at. To me, the drawing does not make this look like we've crammed in too much. So, I want to just think about it another few seconds before this, but I am leaning towards being in favor of this for those reasons because I see this as something that's a benefit to our community also. I really wish Jewel would have come in here and said, "We'll work with you." Basically, what they've said is, "No, we won't work with you," in this case. So, and while they may have in the past, they are not choosing to do it now. And this particular body, as well as the village board and staff, have put considerable time into this sign ordinance, and it would have been nice. And it is sort of a he-said, she-said as far as whether you're going to count this extra side, half side on the west side. I know with doing that, it reduces the amount of coverage. Without doing that, it increases the amount of coverage. So, it can really go either way on that. And I'm not an authority and an expert. We do have an architect on the panel here on the commission, and he seems to think that that should not be counted, which is contrary to what your architect has said, but also in opposition or in agreement with what our staff has said. So, I'm going to think about this for a second as we go through. Are there any other... Are there any other questions or comments that anyone has?
I was just going to add that I think...
Yes.
I agree with a couple of other statements that have been made, that the south elevation doesn't leave a lot of room for eliminating signs, since most of them are dedicated for businesses. But I think, I think the RX sign on the west side of that south elevation, as well as the large Jewel Osco sign on the west elevation, would be your two building sign options to reduce in order to keep the same square footage, or go with the, you know, adjusting and fitting it into the monument signs at the entries. I'm just throwing it out there, I think those are your two strongest options, if this does not make it through the village board. And I also echo Commissioner Lavoy's concern that unless we're convinced that this is a unique project and has unique hardships, I think it sets a very bad precedent for future applicants. And I don't, I know that your opinion is that it's a unique project, I just don't see it. I don't see its unique hardship.
Commissioner Lavoy.
Yes, I just wanted to point out one other couple of things that I didn't mention in my testimony, and that is, the package that we received from staff. The, on item number two, I think it's the third or fourth page in, it suggests that, I think it's only Commissioner Self also, and it's making its recommendations, whether there are practical difficulties or particular hardships, taking into consideration the extent to which the following facts are. And it lists A through F, and I think F's are reached, but I don't agree with A, B, C, D, or E, as I'm in agreement with those statements. And, you know, that's not part of, findings of fact, but it's something that's listed in the report, and suggesting that we take these into consideration. And I don't believe that, I agree with five of the six items listed.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to add, if there is some question on whether that whole elevation should be included in signage, staff has already done a calculation. There would be 13.3 square feet eligible to add, so they still would be exceeding the 916 that would be permitted.
Like 55 feet, then?
I think that there are two issues here. It's number of signs and square footage of signs. And if this were strictly a number of signs, because they have a lot of businesses operating inside, I think that that is a different aspect. It's, you know, they have a certain number of businesses. Every business needs to advertise in some way. But staying within the permitted square footage, which has been greatly relaxed, I think, is the larger issue that is here, that they not only want to increase the number of signs, but also the square footage to work there. And then I think the elevations, correct me if I'm wrong, these are EFS elevations on the building? The tan, is that EFS, do you know? Is it stocko type?
Not 100% confident. I'm guessing it's EFS.
But I think that there probably is some resistance to removing signs, because the damage that those signs do is almost irreparable, so that you can't, you're always going to tell that it was repaired. But adding a new sign also means that that sign would never come down. It would always be there, so, because the damage would be done to that elevation.
Mm-hmm. Great.
But I have also done a EFS repair before on these kind of similar, and I think you can get, I mean, I don't think that it'd be noticeable to the public just passing by. You're not going to notice that it was patched, it was unproper.
I've seen some really bad repairs on EFS.
Right. It's a craftsmanship.
Doyle, would you then, very well?
Any other comments from the commissioners? Discussion? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. We have a request here for two variances tonight. We're going to combine those into one. Findings of fact, so we'll have one read to us, and I would ask Joe to please do that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is PZ 18-003 Jewel Osco, regarding 4 East Ogden Avenue in Westmont. Request for variances to increase maximum number of signs permitted on the property and to increase the maximum allowable signage area. Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations and the district in which it is located. Findings of fact, the property contains a primary use, Jewel Osco, and numerous subtenant uses, all of whom have existing signage, which collectively exceed the maximum number and area of signage allowed by the zoning ordinance. Due to these subtenant signs, the Jewel Osco has restricted an allowable signage for its own use. The applicant cannot sufficiently advertise its various services and yield a reasonable return without this variance. Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. Findings of fact, this property is unique in that the building contains a primary use and several subtenant uses, all of whom have a need to identify their businesses on the property. Without this variance, the applicant is unable to identify the new and important aspects of its business. Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. Findings of fact, the property is located in the B2 General Business District in a heavily trafficked Cass and Ogden Avenue commercial corridor. Granting this variance to allow an additional reasonably sized wall sign is consistent with the existing signage on the property, is consistent with the signage of surrounding businesses, and will not adversely impact the character of this commercial neighborhood.
If you agree with these findings of fact, please raise your hand. If you disagree with these findings of fact, please raise your hand. The Planning and Zoning Commission does not agree by a vote of one to six. I will entertain a motion for planning and zoning now, item 18-003 Jewel Osco, regarding the property located at 4 East Ogden Avenue in Westmont, for A, a zoning code variance request to increase the maximum number of signs permitted in the B2 General Business District.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bartel, second by Commissioner Sharp. Comment or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
No.
Commissioner Bartel?
No.
Commissioner Lavoy?
No.
Mr. Carmichael?
No.
Commissioner Sharp?
No.
Mr. Van Buren votes no, and Chairman Pell?
Yes. Item B, I will entertain a motion for zoning code variance request to increase the maximum allowable signage area in the B2 General Business District.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Carmichael. Any comment or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Bartel?
No.
Mr. Lavoy?
No.
Commissioner Carmichael?
No.
Commissioner Sharp?
No.
Mr. Van Buren votes no. Commissioner Thomas?
No.
And Chairman Pell.
Votes yes. Okay. So on both variances, there is a one to six vote to not send a positive recommendation to the village board. However, you still have the ability to go. They have the final say on this, and Joe will coordinate with you. That will be on a Thursday evening in the near future, and he'll coordinate with you exactly when that schedule would be. Thank you for your presentation tonight, and we wish you luck.
Thank you.
My pleasure. Thanks. All righty, that concludes our new business. Do we have any other miscellaneous items? Joe, anybody? I'd just like to wish everybody a Happy New Year, and remind everybody that our next meeting is going to occur on Wednesday, February 14th, so it's a Valentine's meeting. So we're asking the public to adopt their favorite commissioner and show him some love. It is Valentine's night, but we will be here, and we will be ready to go, and then it's steak and lobster afterwards, maybe. Anyway, all right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bartel, second by Commissioner Thomas. All in favor, say aye. Aye? We are adjourned.